We're gonna go a little out of order. First up is Public Works.
At this time, we'll call the Public Works Committee to Order. We're at the second one.
H five.
Four, yeah, page four.
Supervisor Reinhardt?
Yes.
You just wait a second for Amanda to get back, please. She had to step, get a couple copies quick. Thank you.
He's had a mortar for ten years, he just hasn't got them yet. Hmm? Just picking on you a little bit. Whatever's the cheapest.
That's a pretty good price you got. Why does, why does Fintown want seventy-five thousand foot truck? You're getting two. What's that?
Amanda.
Yeah, well, I just, no, we haven't, but we're gonna...
Buy new one?
No, well, the water department's getting new one, we're gonna transfer one from that one to the Rex.
Amanda, I didn't make her copy it. I got a spreadsheet of what Soil and Water's done, so I want everybody to see it.
I hope not.
What they've done this year.
I already know what they're gonna do. I have an idea what they're gonna do. I'm prepared. I can't speak for everybody else.
Are we losing?
Regular. Oh, did he? Of course.
Barely got enough people here to vote. Agree.
That's, that's fine. Their printer's not working. She said the printer's not working. Yeah, you got yours. It must be they burned up everything on you.
Okay. Okay, this time we'll call Public Works to Order. We have four issues to discuss tonight. The first one is Supervisors approve the purchase of one twenty-twenty-five Ford F-150 pickup and one twenty-twenty-six Ford, or Ford F-250 for the Highway Department. There's support in a second. Roy, you wanna go ahead?
This isn't our budget for this year. State bid trucks.
These are state contract, budgeted. Are you gonna get them this year, or?
Probably not till February, March.
Okay. And the total price, where are we, ninety-seven, two thirty-five sixteen? Okay. There's a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Second, Supervisors approve snow and ice agreement with the Town of Fayette for twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six year.
Support.
Second.
Motion in a second. Is there any discussion? This is every year?
Yeah, we've done this for the last seven years of the Town of Fayette.
Any questions for Roy on this?
Do you get any credits for community sharing? Whenever they, the state used to give us some credits for...
Under what program credits for?
Yeah, when John Shepard was here, I know I lost a couple employees. If you save the money, you can get money back from the state, but I don't ever...
There is a couple grants out there.
There was a shared services.
Yeah.
All right, is there any further discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm gonna take number four, so Roy doesn't have to come back up. Supervisors approve surplus vehicles and items to be auctioned.
Support.
There's a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? It's carried.
Thanks, Roy.
Thank you. Bring up item number three for this. I would ask the Facilities Director, Code Enforcement, Lee, please, and John Snyder. So I will read the, the motion and get the second, so we can open it up for discussion, and then we'll go from there. Supervisors approve additional funding to John Snyder Architects for the OFA and Security Renovation Project.
Support.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion in a second. Now we'll enter into discussion. This project has run over the allotted money that John was budgeted for this project, so any additional funding that goes back to John for his time has to be done through a motion by the Board and authorized by the Board for payment. That's why we're having this discussion. With that, I wanted John to come and kind of explain where this project is, what was the big delays in this project. I don't, I'm not looking to talk about any one specific contractor, just in general terms, but I think we need to hear why this got to this point. So with that, I wanna turn it over to John.
Yeah, so I think I was before the Board in June, I think it was, or whatever time. It was June-July time period, and I gave the update that I thought we'd be finished by August. Well, that didn't happen. And one of the reasons for that, backing up, you know, we've had a string of, I think, fairly successful projects with this particular contractor, general contractor. That was managed by their superintendent, who was great. He did a, did a pretty good job of managing the subs, managing the electrical contractor and the mechanical contractor. At the beginning of this project, that superintendent was with us until, I think, about November of last year, when he retired. He was replaced with a, another superintendent who did not take on the role of managing the subcontractors, the electrical contractor and the mechanical contractor. A lot of that responsibility, basically quote-unquote, said that it's not within our scope of work, which is not true. It's in our specification documents that they are responsible for managing all of the subs and getting the work completed, and, you know, so that way Bob and I aren't managing all of that. That's one of the reasons. The second reason is they did not submit on the exterior, or they submitted on exterior doors, which we had a very specific spec for, which were, which we ended up rejecting, and that was in March of this year. The doors that we had specified are, which are a heavy-duty aluminum door, two-inch door. That was a twenty-week lead time. We were projecting that to come on-site in mid-August, so that we could wrap up the project by the end of August. They didn't install those doors until the second week in September. They couldn't, and basically, we couldn't finish the job without the doors, because we needed the secure entrances, and also the tile, the ceramic tile that was to be installed in that lobby couldn't get done. And that was done also in September. I think it's just the general mismanagement of the subs and, and lack of communication amongst the subs. And a lot of that responsibility fell onto Bob and I, and also, to some degree, Codes to jump in where needed to help out. I think that's generally, I have specific dates if we need to follow up with dates, but I'm happy to do that.
I, I think that is gonna happen down the road, to be very specific about dates and times and where things went awry. A couple questions then. Where are we on the project today?
I would say that we're pretty close to close out. I think we have a fire alarm test that needs to be, and a, a enunciator that needs to be installed by the electrical contractor. They know about it. They're working on getting people out here to do that test. The mechanical contractor has a few items, a few minor items to address, and we're getting air balancing done this Friday. So from the mechanical side, I think they'll be done. I think MASA is really just, their, their contract is down to just, you know, punch list items at this point.
Do we have a tentative timeframe? Because I've, unfortunately, when we talk about these things, the one week turns to one month, which turns to three months. So, I mean, I guess I'm looking for, we need a drop-dead date that this is gonna be done. This project has dragged on way too long. So I guess can we hold their feet to the fire on whoever these contractors are to get it by a certain date? I mean, it's my understanding that, you know, there's still payouts to be done. And, and so, I mean, I don't, we're not gonna pay out final until everything is done, done, done.
No, we've been holding back money all along. Bob and I have been really good about that, to provide motivation for these contractors to get back on-site. I think Upstate hasn't submitted a payout in some time with that knowledge. Yeah, no, there's, we're withholding a fairly substantial amount of money on these contractors to perform the limited amount of work that they have to do.
Sure.
If I'm understanding right, so the product's behind because of the contractors, yet we're trying to make the county accountable for it. It seems the contractor should be paying you the extra. I don't think, we're, I mean, you took the project, you hired these people. There should have been something where, hey, if they're not done, they lose out. Certainly, the taxpayers shouldn't lose out on this project. We're, we're paying for someone else's mistake, whether it be the electrician, the plumber, whoever it was, but someone needs to be held accountable. Certainly not the taxpayers of Seneca County. That's how I feel about it. I, I think it's not fair.
I just wanna say that, was there no, the contract, no drop-dead date? It's gonna cost you a thousand dollars a day if it's not done by...
No, there is, you know, usually with penalty clauses is what you're talking about. There's an incentive clause that you have to provide to, you know, if they finish early. We did not have that. Bob and I have talked about, learned from this experience that on the next project specifications that we put out, we are going to nail those down, including all of the inspections that Codes wants to have. We're gonna nail those down a hundred percent with firm dates and completion dates. And if we wanna talk about penalties and incentives at that time, you know, that would be the time to do it.
John, is it your belief that the reason your billable hours went over is because of the delays by the contractors? One hundred percent.
One hundred percent, yeah. Normally, for any project, you know, public bid projects extend, they just do. Usually, it's a couple months, you know, of wrapping things up or getting ass builds or whatever else. You know, there's always straggling information that I have to respond to. I normally don't charge for that time, but given the extraneous circumstances here, I...
So what is your cost? Because you have to come here inspected, or follow up on these people, or?
Yeah, I'm following up. I'm following up with emails. I'm coming up for inspections that are, you know, should have been done months ago. Having to, you know, send out emails and be on-site when I have to be on-site.
With that said, John, if the project isn't complete and this, is there any more billable hours projected from you, given that this is not a completed project?
You know, I'm still, I'm still sending emails out. I'm still coming up. You know, I told Bob that, I mean, at this point, we're so close that I can't bill anything more, because I feel like we're in that real close-out stage that I normally would be in at this stage. Should have been in in February.
I, I know Supervisor Shipley had a question, but one thing I wanna have Lee weigh in now. I guess, where's Codes in this now? And what are, what is your plan going forward?
Couple things I'd like to respond to. Mr. Schmitters, that the county taxpayer shouldn't be paying this bill. I truly believe it should be the contractors who have failed to provide us a service and a product that we agreed to in a contract. I don't know all the legalities of that stuff, but normal thinking is if you don't get what you're supposed to, or what you agreed to or paid for, somebody should be paying you some money. I couldn't agree more. In defense of Mr. Snyder, he has been here multiple, multiple extra times due to the fact of where the project got to when school kicked out, and now all the contractors go to school contracts. So what they had left to do is small amounts of work that are extremely important to the finish of the product or the project, all the safety stuff, the fire stuff. And we, we've provided multiple emails, things that were required. We did an extensive plan review at the beginning to stop a lot of overcharging or extras that have been plagued over many, many projects throughout the years. Thought that we would stop ninety-five percent of that. But what's happened in our eyes is it got into such small parts that these companies don't wanna come back and finish. I truly agree that we should not pay any type of county project in full or anything until we see a little project for sure in the future. In the past, that's happened where we paid out and the projects still aren't done a year later. So I would hope that those three things we stick to for sure. There's some things right now that if you can get people here, you can get it done. But they're real, they're all important. It's all for the safety of the public and our employees. And we're not, we're not budgeting.
Well, I understand that. I guess, I'm just trying to, you know, everything seems ambiguous, and there's like no real, we have, it's, it's almost like we have no control over these contractors when they're going to be here to finish this up. And it just keeps dragging on and dragging on and dragging on. And I, I don't understand why this is happening. I don't understand why we cannot force them to come here. I mean, this project was supposed to be done, what, April? I thought was a tentative date.
So to back up, back up, originally, we bid this project in September of last year with the completion date of January of twenty-twenty-five. Because of the delays of getting the contract in their hands, Bob and I said, okay, well, it took us a month to get you the contract, so you can't really start without the contract. Let's, we'll mutually agree that end of March was the completion. We all agreed on that, and here we are. So that was, you know, really our completion date, March.
I'm sorry, go ahead. Go ahead.
I mean, our code officer, Adam Hamshire, who's handily, it's doing a phenomenal job. He's down there removing ceiling tiles and stuff to get the proper inspections, which is not what we're supposed to be doing. And the contractor's been made aware of all these things. There's a, a lot of things that MASA, I don't know all the communication and stuff, but they're basically the G C. But anytime you deal with a, a government project or county project of this nature, there always has to be, what, three contractors, right? Based on how it falls, they can't just be responsible, so they all had to get their own permits, which, by the way, theirs are all running out as well, which we provided back on the twenty-first, I believe, all the dates that things were expiring. And on the twentieth, we provide a list of eight major things that need to be finished. Adam did all that, too, everyone, as well as the Board and different people. So people are aware. It's just, I think it's at the final little spot that they don't wanna spend the time to come here. And somehow, we have to hold them monetarily accountable, 'cause that's where you hurt them the most, is in their pocketbook. But that's, MASA could have put pressure on people, and they didn't, because they had the overall project. They just washed their hands of it, 'cause basically their part was done. But I don't know, I don't know who on our side is supposed to manage those people. Our department is to manage what's being built or what's being done properly or safely. I don't know what that agreement is with the county, with the architect, with your G C or all your others, of who's responsible for con... We didn't get called for, even after the meeting in July, I think it was, or June, where we, they gave an update of four items that needed to be fixed, and then we'd be done in mid-August. We had a meeting with MASA and everybody and said, hey, we need to be called. And we shook hands in a room for, we haven't been called for any inspections. And here it is, end of October. Now, last week, Mr. Snyder and Bob went down there with Adam, and Adam spent three days down there going through things, but contractors haven't called us to stitch through this whole project.
Supervisor Shipley, you wanna disagree?
Thank you, Mike. And this is probably, I don't wanna be dead horse, but this is probably directed towards John, who drew up the plans and specifications. I've been in the construction business, retired for forty-five years. The hammer that the owner, in this case, the county, has is that you have a completion date in the general contractor's subcontract. And you have liquidated damages attached to that. It's not normal procedure to bid a job without a completion date, because then, as you well know, John, you don't have anything to hang over their head.
Yeah, it'll never finish.
So I, I would suggest that you don't design any more work without a completion date for the general contractor.
Just like to add to that, I also was in the construction business for forty-five years. As superintendent, when we did New York Car pratic college, from RIT to eighty-nine to ninety-one. The little darlings are coming to school September fifth. It has to be done. There's two-hundred-and-seventy-five classrooms, all the site work, all the buildings, classrooms and everything. And when RIT left, they just cut the traps on the sinks and left the water on the ground and walked away for eight years. Everything had to be done. September fifth, it had to be done. There was no exceptions. We brought it in on time and under budget. There has to be an end date on any contract.
Yep. No, we, we bid the project with the dates that I mentioned. You know, as I mentioned, it's, it was them not managing the subcontractors.
There's just no teeth in it for us to go after them for not meeting the date. That's the problem.
Is there enough money that we owe contractors that would pay this? I mean, I say we withhold it from them. If they're not doing the job, we withhold it.
Hang on one second. Art, one second. I, I hate to put you on the hot seat here to weigh in on this. I just wanna be very cautious. If we're gonna talk about anything potential litigation with a company or whatever, that really needs to be done in an executive session. We're gonna talk about litigation, correct, Art? But I, I agree with what you're saying. I guess the question, you know, I know you and I've talked about this a little bit. I just wanna be careful how we word it.
Yeah, if you wanna discuss that, I think we should go into executive session, or we can, if you go all the way down, and I go over the details of everything, and I come back.
Supervisor, looking?
Yeah. Question on holdback. You said considerable amount of money hasn't been paid. Generally, there's a five percent municipal holdback. Do they have more than five percent of work? Is it like six and a half, or is it not even four percent?
Oh, it's not very much work yet to complete.
So?
So, but we, we are withholding much more than what they're...
Five percent holdback plus the work that needs to be completed?
Oh, yeah, we're, yeah, I, I have a, a general rule of thumb on that, which probably don't wanna discuss here publicly, but it's pretty aggressive.
Second question, is this project start with a permit that was completed before work started? Or did work start and then they backrolled into a permit? Because I heard Lee say that they haven't really called for inspections. Town and Land, I mean, got the same problem. Our, our group started without a permit, and then they forgot to call the inspectors, and now we have plumbing, drain plumbing that runs uphill, right?
Hard to get that water to run.
Yeah, it's kinda, without a pump, no pump. So anyways, long story short, that all was somewhat of a...
I can address that. That is correct. They, they started the project without permits and insurances and so forth. Upon Cheryl Coran and, and the Codes Department, we put a stop to it, and they proceeded to get the correct permitting and insurances.
And that was, that was due to the contracts not being in place.
Gotcha, okay.
I believe they, I believe the conversation was we can let them start on light demo. That exceeded, it exceeded that point, and that's when we, we put a stop to it.
Do you feel like, from a Codes perspective, that the inspections that need to happen have happened?
Not, not even close. I mean, we've had to struggle to get them done, but they're done, and they're done right. It's just a lot of extra work for John and Bob. That's probably why he's asking you for more money. And a lot of extra work on, on our Codes Department, multiple members in the department making visits down there when nobody's around and poking around and inspecting things and taking photos.
So at least at this point, you feel as though you're up to par?
Very comfortable, very comfortable. Yes, sir.
John, on this holdback money, who makes that decision? Is that a board decision on our end, based off your recommendation on final payouts?
No, usually it's me just looking at the amounts and either holding on to the payout and not submitting it, or I'm happy to talk about a process if we wanna get into a much more detailed process with it. But generally, it's, it's me looking at the, the work to be completed, of course, talking with Bob, and then making, making determinations that I'm always protecting Seneca County on, on the amount owed.
Normally, I would review that with the architect. If I don't feel comfortable that work, that P F that is presented to the county has been fulfilled, I won't second-guess it. I push it right back to the architect until he lets me know that work's been completed.
Is there any other discussion questions from anybody? So where we are is we have the motion in a second to authorize the additional payment to John for work completed in an amount of thirteen thousand, six hundred and thirty thousand, sixty-one cents. That is where we are in committee. I know what the feeling is as far as recouping. I don't know if that's a discussion that we can have. That, that would be like a litigation discussion, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So obviously, we can't have that right here. The work has been completed by John, so we're at the point where we have to either authorize the payment or not authorize the payment out of committee. That, that is where we are.
Doesn't have to go to the full Board?
Yeah, we have to authorize it to get it out of committee, though.
I'm not in support of, but I will let the whole Board decide on it. I'll let it get out of committee, but I think the whole Board should make a decision on this.
My thoughts is when the job's complete, maybe we can give them this extra money, but I'll take it out of committee, let the Board hash it out.
Supervisor, has anyone say something? That's, I, I, he does not anticipate any further funding request to him off of this project. So there's the motion in a second, and I'm hearing that there are two, well, this is the vote to move it out of committee to the full Board. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay. So the motion to, for the payment has gone from committee to the full Board for final decision. I would ask that you sometime, maybe next week, make yourself available to have a discussion?
Yeah, no, I'm happy to.
Okay.
Happy to, and, you know, I think there's perhaps a larger conversation about contracts and specifications and all of that kind of stuff that I should probably have with Art for the next time we do this.
Well, I, I would ask that the Chairman please tentatively schedule an executive session for the full Board meeting on the fourteenth to discuss potential litigation, please? Thirteenth, I'm sorry.
And when is he ready to have, so Art can digest it and have a summary for the Board?
I'm hoping before then. Okay.
That shouldn't be a...
All right. Moving on. All right, we are now... We are now on to, uh, the agreement. So we are under Public Works, the one that was sent back to committee from the meeting at the Three Bears, authorizing an agreement with John Architect and Engineering Service for related to the health and human services building renovations.
Support.
There's a motion and a second? Okay, open for discussion. Any discussion on this?
How's this contract reading?
Yeah, well.
We're going to work on that one. Don't worry.
This is, this is not the contract for the bid. This is the contract with John for that. My thought process on this, and John, please, I mean, is that I would like to hold off on this until we get this first one resolved before we enter into an agreement again. I, I wanted to get O F A closed out and completed to everybody's satisfaction before we jump into another contract, um, with engineer for this. That's my thought. I, again, it's at the committee level. All I can, just put it out there.
Is there any time restraints on the Sam Grant or anything like that? Any grants available?
Uh, I don't know the answer to that. That would have to be, Margaret would have to chime in on, or Mr. Julie, Julie?
She's got to check on the date.
She's not.
We could push it out another month, the committee, next month.
I mean, and it's, again, John, it's, it's nothing, but I, I think to do our due diligence, I believe that we need to get one done first and, and to everybody's satisfaction before we go for round number two.
Okay. That's fair.
Okay.
I agree with that.
All right. All right, so there's a motion and a second. So we're in discussion, so all those in favor, I mean, if the resolution does not pass, can it be reintroduced?
Bring it up at a later meeting. What do you think?
Okay. Okay. Can I ask for an amendment to this?
I'll make an amendment that we, uh, push this out one more month for.
Back to November committee?
November committee meeting.
Okay. Okay, so there's an amendment, a motion and a second for an amendment on this resolution to send it back to committee to be rediscussed at the November committee cycle.
Support.
Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor of the amendment?
Support.
Okay. All those in favor of the resolution as amended?
Support.
Okay. Is there any other new business for Public Works? Is there any other old business? Hearing on Public Works is adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Sorry, Mr. Chairman, a little long.
Thank you. Thank you, Julie. Supervisor Reynolds, will you run Water and Sewer Treatment Management for me, please?
Yeah, what pages are?
You're next on the mic, Manny.
Oh, moving around again?
Back to page two.
Hey.
I think he's doing Water and Sewer.
Did you say you're doing Water and Sewer now?
Water and Sewer, yes. To turn my aids up.
First issue, and this is to call the Water and Sewer Committee together, and first issue is ongoing issues and matters regarding the Water and Sewer Treatment Management. What's it got for us?
Yeah, so this resolution went before the committee last, uh, well, actually, the resolution, there was a presentation done by Brian Sabiga from Wendell Engineering about the leak that was found at the Hillside Tank. There was a, a memo that was prepared and shared with the committee, I guess, yesterday, sort of outlining the visit, uh, some potential solutions, but really, I think the language of the, the resolution sort of got, or maybe misrepresented the conversation that occurred at the last committee and there was sort of the wrong conclusion drawn. Uh, and so the intent of the resolution was to just get approval to do a more thorough investigation to determine what the best route was for solving the leak. Uh, and so this should be.
Okay.
Just the language that speaks to decommissioning and taking the tank out of service, you know, should be excluded.
Could Dan or Art, could the resolution just be simplified to say the committee directs you to fur, do further investigation?
Yes.
And report back?
Can you just make a motion to hold back?
Well, does it have to be this complex? Can't it just be, I move that we direct the Director of Water and Sewer to continue and further investigate options for the Hillside Tower and report back to the committee?
Are you addressing the resolution right now or?
Well, I'm just saying, bag the resolution and do what I just said. No, I'm, I'm.
No, you can do that. So I, I'm not sure if the resolution, I don't think the resolution has been presented as properly in front of the committee, um, but so I, it sounded to me like it was a little bit confusing in an update versus what was in the resolution.
Yeah, because I wanted to give Dan a broad scope to investigate.
Yeah, you can do that and then take action on the resolution when that's proper.
Right now, technically, we're just under discussion item.
Okay.
We haven't had a. We don't do, we don't have a resolution up front, it's really in theory.
Well, what's that?
I guess what's this, what written out, authorized developing an engineering plan?
That's what was sent back.
That's what came back?
Yep.
Okay.
More discussion. So I think at this point, you could amend the resolution to reflect the regular route to just announce. You should remove that first resolve or edit it to what supervisor tells us.
But you're still on number one. You didn't get the unfinished business to the resolution yet. You're just in discussion. It wasn't a first and a second to even.
Right.
Talk about the resolution.
So if you want to just read the resolution and you guys do first and a second, then you can.
You said something was sent out yesterday?
So there was, uh, the memo prepared by Wendell.
That's what you sent to us, right?
Yes.
Yes.
I, I read.
What you read, what we read. Remember the multi-page memo from Wendell? You texted it, you read it.
Not yesterday.
You said you skimmed it.
All that thing I skimmed, yeah.
Yeah, that, that's, right? That's.
Yeah, that, that's, that's the only thing that's been shared related to this topic.
Okay. Okay.
So, I'll do.
Where's the money going to come from to fix this?
Well, but.
Once this, once this, once this gets, gets rolling.
Well, that's a great question, but I, we're not there yet.
I think you should probably collect the resolution from the committee versus second and then discuss it and then decide how you want to.
I move on the resolution.
I need a first and a second. I'll second it. You can, Bob can second it.
I don't want to go ahead with this right now.
Well, right, I, I don't either, but we have to move the resolution to discuss it.
You've got a first and a second.
Yeah, a first and a second, we can talk.
All right.
So now you can discuss it and then decide how, if you want to move forward and recommend it to the board or not?
I, I think we should amend it so that it just, we send Dan back to work with Wendell and whomever and come forward back to the committee with additionally research resolutions.
Right, more, right, different recommendations.
Recommendations, sorry.
Different recommendation.
But to do nothing yet.
Based on the research that we, they, they're going to do.
He's doing something. He's spending money. How much has he spent so far?
So that was the other reason, this memo was prepared very quickly to try to keep costs down.
Well, we haven't spent anything yet, right?
Well, I mean, there's a little time for the site visit.
You've been where they've looked at it.
Yeah. So, you know, still, uh, you know, whatever, principal senior engineer, site visit, investigation, generate a, a report with some very brief, you know, options presented, but nothing has been done.
Because we, we have to have an engineer look at it.
But they've been down working on that, trying to get the leak stopped.
Right, right.
And they're almost got it stopped.
Yes, I, yes.
Sure. And so there could still be value, so I guess if you go back to the frequency of leaks, there was a leak in the riser in early twenty-twenty-four. Here we are in twenty-twenty-five. There's a leak that just happens to be in a difficult spot. And so the sort of conversation is just around, you know, this is a seventy-year-old tank that needs repairs, maintenance, and it's, does that serve the county, you know, County Water District One, and then how does that relate to the surrounding towns? So it's just, is there something else that could be done that better serves the needs of the county and neighboring towns?
Right, because as, as of today, the, right, so the, the engineer has cost us money, but otherwise, uh, the water folks from Varick and Fayette have helped in stemming the flow, so that's no, I mean, we're eating that.
And you would agree that it's a, that it's, it's a difficult to access spot?
Yeah, yeah.
Because if there was a simple repair, then, you know, we could have done it. The last one was for approximately seven thousand dollars.
So to give Dan the direction, how do, how do we amend this?
So I think that there, I think what I've heard are maybe two options. One is to amend this resolution. This resolution is authorizing Wendell to develop hearing plans and specs for the installation of the rezurging valve.
Okay.
The second, the second option is to hold this resolution down and take an informal ad forward and explain different options.
Mr. Chairman, can you call for a vote?
All right, we'll do a vote on this and, all right, all's in favor of this resolution?
Nay.
Say yea.
Nay. No.
Two nays.
It's done.
It's done. So it's gone, so now we create a new one.
Do we need a resolution or can we just say the, the feeling of the committee is?
Just redirect, just have him go out.
You can give an informal.
Give information and, um, send him out and get information.
Go forth and seek information from the parties.
Okay.
All right, let's do it that way.
And keep the cost reduced. And I would say make sure, so our engineer, Pat Nicoletta from M R B has looked at it. I would say include him, uh, Jim Bromka, those folks who are most aware of what's going on.
Me.
Yeah, so I, I think.
And Bob and myself.
Yeah, next step would be to perhaps call a meeting where everyone comes together.
Yes.
And then the big thing is, is the quality of the end product is based on data collection.
Well, I think it would be good, if, if we all sat down together, then you kind of know where we're going and where you want to go and make it all fit. I'm, I'm good with that. Mr. Chairman, is he good with that?
I'm good. I'm good.
Is that Bob? Okay.
So, all right, so I guess that's it.
Is that?
Just you guys set up a meeting and, uh, go from there.
Thanks. Okay, you good? Thanks.
Who's going to set the meeting up?
Dan.
Dan, all right, you, you call. Go come.
Okay.
Uh, is there anything else?
That's it.
Water? That was all you got? Everything else is working?
Well, I got, I'd like to throw something out here. That's something, you have the authority. The authority is supposed to be selling water and help out at the north end here. If the authority put a water line in from Yale Farm Road, straight up the hill to McGrane Road, instead of going, running all that water all the way down there, back up through here, through the bank, by the time the water gets there, it doesn't have any chlorine in it. Or this will get you fresh chlorine. You won't be dealing with any leaks down at the depot and then the authority, this could be their first project. So that's something that's for the authority to look at. And they can bill for this, a revenue anticipation.
All right. I've got nothing else, Bob.
I guess, all right, that's it then, I guess.
Mr. Chairman, I think?
Water and Sewer is complete.
Thank you. Next up is Agriculture and Environment Affairs Supervisor Cromwell.
Stay right here.
You have to tell me?
I'm going to get out of here.
We have, uh, one resolution before us that I think is great. S Partee brought it up to me, but this is supporting Senate Bill S eighty-four eighty-one and Assembly Bill A eighty-nine ninety-six.
Support.
It, thank you. Have a second?
Second.
I'd just like to read it. It's short, but, uh, supporting the Senate Bill, Assembly Bill, authorize local governments to opt out of the mandates and benchmarks arising under the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act and associated universal electrification requirements pursuant to section one fifty-three of the county law. Whereas across New York State, communities are facing steep increases in utility costs and housing constructions expenses due to electrification mandates, whereas these include restrictive building codes that prohibit natural gas, vehicle sales quotas that eliminate traditional models and infrastructure ben, benchmarks for E V charging that are often impractical and financially oppressive. Whereas these mandates impose one-size-fits-all burdens that disproportionately harm local governments, particularly rural towns and villages that lack the infrastructure, the tax base and energy capacity to implement these changes safely and affordably. Whereas Seneca County, in its full support of legislation that affirms the principles of home rule by allowing local governments to make energy decisions that reflect the unique needs of their residents and businesses, now therefore be it resolved that the Seneca County Board of Supervisors strongly supports Senate Bill S eighty-four eighty-one and Assembly Bill A eighty-nine ninety-six and strongly supports its municipalities in their decision to opt out of costly, troublesome or impractical mandates imposed under the C L C P A and related electrification standards or code requirements. And further resolved, the clerk of the board is hereby directed to send a certified copy of this resolution to Governor Kathy Hochul, Senate Leader Andrea Stewart-Cousins, Assembly Speaker Carl Hieste, and Assembly Minority Leader William Barclay, Senator Thomas F. Omara, and Assemblyman Jeff Callahan, Assemblyman Phil Palmasano, and all the others deemed necessary and proper. The mandates that we have, you know, now are just not practical for anything.
Too many mandates made that are unfunded.
That's it.
That's the problem.
I have a first and a second?
We did, all right.
Can we have a vote on it?
Yep.
Aye.
Aye.
I forgot I shut it up there.
Mr. Trout?
Interesting part of this conversation. At Senator Omara's and Assemblyman Callahan's meeting in Fayette last week, they pointed out that prior to the closing of the Indian Point Nuclear Facility, New York State had the least carbon footprint and the greenest production of energy in the United States until that was closed. And so we have solutions that don't impose horrible mandates.
Yeah. Thank you. Um, I have one more thing on, on our desk was a completed implementation twenty, twenty-five of our Soil and Water Department. And, uh, just to the general public, it, I'll hit on a couple of these, the Water and Cement Control Basins. Uh, this is for the Keegan and Seneca Lake watershed protection, which is that important to me and, and our Soil and Water deems it important, too. Uh, I'm wondering if we could put this on our website? Amanda, do you think we could put this on our?
We might, Supervisor, we might be able to get Soil and Water to make it a little easier to read, just a thought.
Clean it up, yeah.
Yeah, clean it up, yeah.
They just kind of threw us together at the meeting yesterday, so, yeah.
Yeah.
We could clean this up, make it prettier.
Yeah. But, you know, it's, uh, Cement Control Basins. We did, uh, four of them, uh, for Keegan and four for Seneca Lake Watershed, twelve-hundred feet of diversions and stormwater irrigation ponds and rotational grazing and grants. We got a half a million dollar grant for grazing and water quality initiatives, building health. Building Health and Soil and Resilient Futures, $268,000, and Nutrient and Sediment Reduction Initiative, $1,392,000 awarded. We're heading in the right direction to try to clean these lakes up.
Supervisor-
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Chairman, Mr. Chairman, can I just add a couple of details to your comments? So we had our Monday meeting with the Soil and Water Board Supervisor Reynolds and I. Just wanted to note that as they finished up their budget, I just wanted folks to know that last year, as you may recall, Soil and Water returned $11,000 to the county for funds that they did not use regarding weed harvest. This year, however, the Seneca, Soil and Water went, budgeted more money and spent $7,000 more than what the county had allotted them for removal of weeds. In addition, Seneca County Soil and Water is advocating with DEC Region Eight for addressing the hydrilla infestation. So far, Region Eight has, Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, Region Eight has rejected the attempts to address hydrilla in Keegan Lake.
Right, right, they won't, they don't want to help us, they're like-
It makes no sense.
Yeah, they don't want to help us.
In addition, and you can't really tell it from this exactly, but for what Seneca County spent last year, or I should say in 2025, what we budgeted and contributed to the Soil and Water budget, for every dollar we contributed, Soil and Water brought back into the county through the programs and through assistance with landowners, $6. Let me just repeat that. For every dollar we spent and budgeted for Soil and Water, they brought $6 back into the county. That's a pretty good rate of return. Thank you.
At the water quality meeting last Wednesday that we had, we talked about the hydrilla, the shelter right there. And December 4th, I have a meeting with Region Eight Fish and Wildlife Advisory Board, but every time I've mentioned Keegan Lake, they say that's Region Seven. From, you know, from the DEC perspective, even though the line is down the middle of the lake.
And it's interesting-
Keegan County, they say Region Seven, which is Keegan County Soil and Water.
And DEC does not recognize the Seneca River or Seneca Canal as a watershed, even though that water, the water that drains into that canal, obviously from Seneca Lake, but it reaches as far as the depot south. That water, it's sort of like a triangle. That water drains not directly to Keegan Lake, but into the canal and then into Keegan Lake. And they do not consider that a watershed, which is, makes no sense to me, and something that Soil and Water is advocating for them to fix.
Yeah, we also have two wastewater treatment plants dumping into the canal, and they don't want to take responsibility for keeping those standards. Is there any other discussion? Soil and Water's closed, or Environmental and Agricultural.
Thank you, sir.
It's all the same, isn't it?
Next up is Public Safety and Criminal Justice Supervisor Brownell. They don't have a corner? Oh, yeah, they got it, okay.
We call a Public Safety and Criminal Justice meeting to order. First issue is accept SFY 2025 State Homeland Security Program Grant, or NG 911 grant.
I'll second that.
Any questions?
If I'm reading this right, this is a $1.26 million grant?
Mm-hmm.
And what does it cover?
So its covers are basically our networking equipment that will support call handling equipment, supporting our transition to the next generation 911. So we'll be using it for our Vesta upgrade and our Spillman CAD upgrade, both of which are very old and outdated, and we'll need to upgrade that in order to move to next gen, which is digital. So we're moving, basically, our Vesta is the old analog phone system. This will be able to help us to accept digital and just the next generation for 911. They'll be able to, will be able to accept video, photographs, anything digital.
Can we do text right now? Can you text 911 right now?
Yes, we can do text, but it's very limited.
Oh, it's limited?
Yeah.
And there's no county match?
No.
No county match?
Any other questions? A motion made in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Issue number two, Board of Supervisors authorized the County Sheriff's Department to apply for the New York State 2020 Law Enforcement Technology Grant.
Support.
Second.
Any questions from the committee? Go ahead, Sheriff.
Good evening. This is very similar to the 2023 Law Enforcement Technology Grant. I was notified by the Division of Criminal Justice Services that the, the next wave of money is coming. There's no match from the county, and it's strictly for technology needs and hopefully offsets some budget issues.
Any questions?
How much is it?
The amount's unknown. I'm just looking for authorization to apply. And then they, they said it, the last time we were given $71,250.
A motion made in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number three, Board of Supervisors authorized a renewal contract with United Medical Resources for the purpose of the health claim addictions for the medical and physical services for Seneca County Correctional Facility incarcerated individuals.
Support.
Second.
Questions? Explain, Sheriff.
This is a renewal on a contract, UMR bills at Medicaid, or Med, yeah, Medicaid rate for incarcerated individuals, so it's a cost savings to the county.
Any questions before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number four, Board of Supervisors authorized an intermissible agreement with the Town of Tyre for the court security service to be performed by the County Sheriff's Department.
Support.
Second.
Any questions on it? Explain, I think we understand it all, so.
Sure, I just, I'll just add, I spoke with-
Did it before, yeah.
Yep, we did it for all 2025. I've spoken with Supervisor Partee, and the Town of Tyre indicates they'd like to continue that relationship.
$35 an hour, okay. Any other questions before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Board of Supervisors urges Governor Hochul and the New York State Legislature to enact technical adjuvates to the components of the Raise the Age Law.
Support.
Second.
Any questions? Are you vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number six, I missed one? Nope. Board of Supervisors urges Governor Hochul to and the New York State Legislature to increase the budget allocation for medical assistance treatment, MAT programs in the county correctional facilities.
Support.
Second.
Motion made in the second, is any questions? Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay. Any new business? I've got a little, I'm just going to give you some, Mayor just got them Friday and today. Let you guys take a look at these, and I would think we should table this until next month. I'm just doing some studying on it, unless you want to make an action tonight. Think I need a little study and talk to the sheriff and stuff.
Is it your recommendation, then, that goes to committee or stays in committee for?
Unless you want to turn it down to-
No, I'm just asking, Sheriff, have you seen this?
He hasn't, I don't know if he's seen it or not.
Only because it kind of directed at you.
I think we can table it and go from there.
Is that your motion?
Yeah, I'll make it a motion. Give everybody time.
Alright, we can study it.
I mean, I think everybody needs to weigh in on it, that's all.
That's fine.
Yeah, I got extra ones, so we do it tonight.
I have one thing for old business for you.
I'll make a motion to table it till next committee meeting.
Okay, I'll support.
Did you want to speak?
No, I have something for, for old business, that's why. I just have something for, for old business before he leaves. That's why I just told him to hang out for a second. So go, go ahead and finish this, finish this one.
Finish this, okay. All in favor of my motion?
Aye. To table? Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Unfinished business, old business.
Unfinished business.
Sheriff, if you want, I know with budget coming up, we had talked, I'm just curious where we are in the RFPs for the medical service and the food service for the jail.
They're all public right now.
Okay, we haven't gotten, you haven't got it back yet, or they're?
I defer to the county manager on the timeline. I don't know exactly what the deadline is, but they're all posted.
Okay, thank you. I was just curious if we had gotten any feedback, because I know the medical was a big deal last year as far as finding somebody. I was just kind of curious where we were this year.
Yeah, everything's out there, don't have it yet. We should have a pretty good picture. We have a relatively good number for the budget, though.
Okay, thank you.
Any other unfinished?
No.
Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you. Next up is Health and Human Services Supervisor Hyson.
Does that part fall off?
I don't know.
Extra.
Extra part?
Keep everybody in order.
Okay, like all this being in order for Health and Human Services. First one is to issue Dr. Dale Fryer to the Seneca County Board of Health.
Support.
Second.
Any comments or anything?
Well, a county like ours is required under public health law to have a seven-member Board of Health. At least three of those members need to be physicians, or they recently expanded to include PAs and some other clinicians, but we're very fortunate to have at least, actually, we have four physicians. One of which is Dr. Dale Fryer, resident of the Town of Fayette. He brings a really unique perspective to the Board of Health as an emergency room doctor at the ED in Geneva. You know, he brings things to the board, like remarking at a Board of Health meeting that, hey, you know, I don't know what you guys are doing to the Narcan in the community, but it's working, because, you know, several months back, or a year ago, we would get patients in and we'd have to Narcan them multiple times, and we're not seeing those patients come in anymore. So he reports on that type of thing before we can ever collect data, certainly before we get New York State data, because that takes, that's like pulling teeth to get that, but even our own local data. And in addition, he's just, you know, he's a member of the Grange. I think he's president of the Historical Society, he's a farmer. He brings a very unique perspective, and he's in touch with rural health issues. So we're looking to have him reappointed for another term.
Questions? Thank you for the report, too. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Number two, authorizing an agreement with S-2AY Rural Health Network, DVA, the pivotal public health partnership for network membership and quality improvement activities.
Support.
First and a second?
Yeah, so briefly, first, the, the membership dues are the same as last year, no increase, or same as this year, I guess. And 5,000 of that actually is our portion of the Clear Impact Database, which is, was purchased jointly amongst the eight counties. It's $40,000 a year, so we get to use the entire database for the, just $5,000 a year. And that was a big push from our Board of Health over the past couple of years. Dr. Lorenzetti and others really advocated, we, we need to get local data. We can't be completely reliant on waiting for the state to parse out data that's four years old by the time we get it, to make local decisions. So that database is, we're in the middle of our community health assessment process, which then feeds into our community health improvement plan, those initiatives that we're going to focus on over the next three, four, five, six years. So collecting that local data, we've been feeding it into that process, and it's been great. Additionally, pivotal, they really go by pivotal now, not say rural health anymore, but, I mean, they help us working towards our national, we're an accredited health department, nationally accredited, we're working towards reaccreditation. They coordinate those activities. You know, we have somewhere between 20 and 30 policy and procedure manuals that need to be, many of them updated annually by law or regulation, or at least every other year. And, I mean, they're binders, YETHIC, nursing policies and procedures, and you name it. It's not something a small health department can really focus on. They coordinate and those activities and on and on. So, you know, the, the most recent return on investment was, I think, $2.14 back for every dollar that we spend on this, which truthfully, we get way more back than that, the interaction with the other counties and, and so forth. So we'd like to renew our membership for 2026.
Okay, any questions? Any all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Seneca County Board of Supervisors accept $85,397 from University of Rochester to support services to Seneca County residents impacted by opioid use disorder, substance use disorder.
Support.
Second.
Margaret?
Hi. So this is your two of this grant. It supports a number of different services in the community, including peer services, some transportation services, some support to our mobile crisis team, among other things. There's no county match.
Okay, any questions? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, issue number four. Seneca County Board of Supervisors approves Finger Lakes Local Plan for the period July 1, 2025 to June 30.
Support.
So this is a required plan for the Finger Lakes Workforce Investment Board. Plan was submitted and approved by Department of Labor, so all four counties must agree for the CEO agreement.
Okay. Any questions? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry.
Thank you.
I don't know where that piece came from.
I know, somebody collapses.
Next up, Economic Development Tourism and Housing Supervisor Jeff Trell.
Oh, that one right there. Guess you don't need it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Hyson.
I'll call the Economic Development Tourism Housing Committee to order, and I will invite our county attorney to participate in this conversation. So our first item of, our first issue to discuss, we don't need to vote tonight, but take a look. Amanda sent out the frequently asked questions regarding the New York Short Term Rental Law, this proposal from New York State. And at some point, we'll need to make a recommendation to the full board about whether or not we should opt into this. I'm sorry, whether we should opt out, because if we do do nothing, that's considered an opt-in, and we will be part of the registry. So this FAQ is really good. It produces a lot of, there's a lot of bit of information in here, and it's particularly relevant, I know, for Fayette and probably some other towns who currently have a short-term rental policy and register- who currently have a short-term rental policy and registry and fee that we charge that helps support our land use officer doing inspections. So with that said, I'll, does anyone want to comment or question? Or do we want to have Art comment first, or? The law? Yep. Right. We have a. That's a good, I'm going to let Art do that, yeah, and then I can, I'll talk about Fayette.
Yeah, so it took effect earlier this year. We wanted to bring it in front of the committee because there is the option to opt out. We would have, you know, we would have to opt out by June 25, 2026. The law's a little bit convoluted on that. It says the later of December 31st, or nine months after the enactment, which I think everyone's best guess or understanding is that occurred in September of this past year. So nine months from then would be June 25 of 2026. This law, at least from what I can tell and gather in my discussions, was really put in place to be helpful to the counties in understanding what is going on in their communities with regards to short-term rentals. The brunt of it is put on the hosts and people like Airbnb and VRBO to share all their data and information with the counties. This county, Seneca County, currently already has a registry. It's managed by the Treasurer's Office. There is already an application that people who want to have a short-term rental in the county will submit to the Treasurer's Office. And the Treasurer shares that information with the local towns and villages when necessary. So from the county's standpoint in relation to this law, which requires counties to establish a registry, we already have that in place. The other thing that it does is, if you opt in, allows the county to change their local law a little bit to cover short-term rentals. And Seneca County's existing hotel motel occupancy tax already covers daily vacation rentals. So from Seneca County's standpoint, I don't think that there's a lot of change that we would need to do to comply with this. It would be more of putting a responsibility on the Airbnb and VRBOs to be open with their data and information and share that. There's actually a quarterly requirement that they do that.
They don't fully supply all the names, addresses, and so on and so forth.
Not currently, but that's what this law was meant to address, and does put that requirement on them. So if you opt out, they don't have that requirement to share the information.
Sure.
They will offer to enter into some sort of arrangement, but there's no requirement if you've opted out of the law.
And you might, I don't, you might recall, depending when you were on the board, that I know our office, the county office, was having a struggle trying to get an accurate registry and know who's registered or not. So, so some extent, it was unfair, because those that registered would have to pay that fee, or like in our case, a fee, a registration fee, which we tried to use to cover the expenses of our land use officer, who would then go out and do these inspections or handle complaints. And I think, right, Bob Verick has a, you have a short-term rental policy now too as well.
And we limit them too.
Yes.
So kind of, this law addresses that, to some extent, that Airbnbs are not allowed to, you know, if you opt in, they're not allowed to rent or whatever a property that has not been registered. And then the registry requirement is every two years, they have to reregister. So it really helps in us understanding what short-term rentals are out there. And then from the compensation side, it does also authorize or provide the county with the ability to charge a fee for the registration to cover any costs related to managing that registry. You don't have, we don't have to charge a fee, but we do have that ability if we opt in.
Is there currently a fee?
I don't think so. I don't think Les is here. I don't think so.
Julie, do you know?
We can follow up to confirm that.
So would this supersede the individual towns that have control functions?
That's a great question. So in the document, it says, as long as the town has something in place prior to the enactment, you're good, but once the laws, once the county, go ahead.
I just want to clarify that, that's to the extent, related to the registry, that's true. But as far as like zoning and a local municipality saying whether or not they want to allow short-term rentals or put any sort of regulations, it doesn't affect that whatsoever. But with the registry, Supervisor Treble's exactly right.
Is there any negatives to, sounds like we ought to opt in. In this case, do nothing.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you take any public discussion on this, or is this?
Let me, just as soon as Supervisor Heisen gets it, go ahead, Bob.
Isn't the intent of this to start charging sales tax on vacation rentals?
Well, there's occupancy tax and, go ahead. And sale, there currently is occupancy tax and sales tax.
Sales tax. I thought that was the intent of this.
And occupancy taxes are being reviewed by managed homes and Airbnb and VRBO.
I mean, sales tax.
Yes, sales tax.
That's going to be added on?
It's already, they already do it, correct? Yeah.
Is there any more work or logistical burden for organizations or Airbnb members to fill out paperwork?
I would say yes, but, go ahead.
There's a lot of unknowns.
Come on, come on up here, just, come on up here and just introduce yourself.
I'm sorry.
No, it's all right, no.
It's a big meeting you got. I'm Brian Sergis. I own Finger Lakes Premier Properties. We manage 200, over 230 homes in the Finger Lakes and eight counties. I have 50 employees full-time year-round, 200 seasonally. We have an office in Canadega and Pen Yen, and we're considering opening up one in Seneca County. There's a lot that's unknown about this law. You can opt out of this law and at any time opt in. Wayne County just opted out for that reason, to understand the true cost. If you read that law carefully, there's a lot of things, burdens, regulatory burdens that will be placed on the county, on the host owners, and on businesses like mine.
Can you be specific and point those out to us?
Oh, yeah, did I bring them? I have some stuff here. Let me think. Posting of regulations, inspections, compliance issues. You have to do a cross-comparison between your current law and this new regulation and understand exactly what they're going to ask you to do. I do have a list of those things, and I can get back to you on that if you want.
I was just going to suggest, since, like, this is the first conversation we've had about it, would it be possible, we have until next June? Wish so. So we have, we have some time, we have some breathing time. So my suggestion would be, perhaps we get together, and then at a future committee meeting date, we could get a more thorough evaluation.
Yeah, I'd be happy.
Yes, yes.
I'd be happy to provide a free industry resource for you as to, you know, how people that manage homes think about this, both from a private owner's standpoint and from a business standpoint.
Absolutely, because I know, like, you presented to the town before.
Yeah, we're already regulated to death.
Why don't, why don't we do this? If you could get that put together and send it to Amanda?
Okay.
She can disperse it to the committee.
I'd be happy to.
So we're not going to take any action anytime soon.
Well, that's good. Because I didn't know if you were voting on this tonight.
No, 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 we just, this is the first that's been introduced.
All the counties are considering. And like I said, Yates County is holding a public hearing on November 11th at 1:00 PM, and they're going to opt out. Wayne County just did opt out. And what they're doing is just waiting to see what the true financial cost of this are. This, as far as I understand it, this was developed by New York City for a New York City market, and the Finger Lakes is much different. Maintaining control, you guys have done a good job. You're getting your sales tax, you're getting your occupancy tax. As soon as you get under this, this, if you opt in, you can't get back out.
Right.
Right?
That's correct, yeah.
But if you opt out, you can decide to opt in in the future. So I'm learning about the law too, and I don't like it, obviously. But I just wanted to, you know, offer a managed home perspective on this topic, and I'll be happy to come back and get you any information you want. These are two op-eds that I wrote. One hit the Finger Lakes time, one hit the Albany Times Union. I printed them up for you guys, so I'll leave them with you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Mr. Chairman, the only, I guess I would request that we have the Treasurer involved in one of our future meetings. Because I feel like, and I could be wrong, but I feel like this law will help us where we have people with short-term rentals that we don't know about, and therefore, they're not paying occupancy tax and all the other stuff.
I, I think you will find compliance. The, we're in compliance, and the, we call them OTAs, online travel agents, RBO and VRBO type businesses. I think that if you have certain requests of them, I would, I would determine what those are, and don't be hesitant to ask for it.
So I think that's a great suggestion. So again, you get that material to Amanda, and we'll coordinate this. Amanda, let's make sure we add the Treasurer on that.
And I'll give Amanda my card and take hers if she's walking around with it.
Supervisor Heisen.
The sales tax, how are they collecting the sales tax then?
When the booking occurs, just like any kind of purchase, yeah, when they book it.
Well, if an individual has a vacation rental, he or she is aware that you're supposed to collect sales tax?
Yeah, they see it right at the time of booking. They'll see the occupancy tax, they'll see the sales tax, and sales tax is also charged on cleaning and pet fees and that type of thing. So this just came into effect this year. So you guys are going to see a lot of revenue coming in. This is tourism. The short-term rental industry is part.
Talking the sales tax.
Yeah, the sales tax, because you didn't have that last year. Now you got it this year. If you get your budget out, you're going to see a line item, and that kicked in April 1st. So in 2026, you'll have a full 12 months to recognize that income, see what it is. But as far as I understand it, the, the costs of administering this are understood, so I would just be careful about not putting more bureaucracy and expenses on top of what you got.
Great point. Supervisor Cronin-Water?
As far as identifying the short-term rental, we have a program that we pay $23,000 to a company to identify.
It's, it's pretty easy to identify. There's software programs out there that you can, the counties are using it. You can, anybody who advertises a program, a property online, you guys can flush it out. Yates County's doing a pretty good job of that. I've worked with them, because we have an office there. They know if somebody's renting and they're not registered, it's not that hard to find them.
I do know that the town at the time that we hired host compliance at the county level, our town clerk knew a lot that the county didn't know, simply because neighbors tell us.
You don't need the neighbors. There's, there's some real website technology out there that'll just flag them for you. It's real simple. Usually, the Treasurer is doing it right now, and the counties have it figured out. So.
You would recommend Yates County as a model?
I, yeah, well, we, we helped them set it up, because we're, we're, we're in support of responsible regulations. It's just getting to be too much. I'm watching you guys vote on other things here. I'm just like, God, I'm glad there aren't more, but, yeah. So I'll be available to you if I can help.
That's terrific. We'll make sure that we're in contact.
Thank you. Anything else?
I'd ask if you could just structure, when you come back to present, sort of structure the elements of the law that stand out to you, and what you see as a detriment and possibly even any benefits, just that helps us.
I'd be happy to do that. You'll read in the op-ed, just it's kind of a general overview of what's going on, but I will come back and be more specific. Will you be doing this next month? Is this when it's?
It won't be next month.
So I just watch your agendas and?
No, I, yes, but I'll make sure that you are contacted. Like, we're not going to have a meeting that has you on the agenda and you not know about it.
Okay, so you're code enforcement?
No.
I don't know.
No offense.
I don't know. I was trying to figure out who the attorney is.
Economic right here.
That's the attorney?
Right here.
I thought, I thought it was either him or the guy over there.
Economic, tourism, and housing.
Okay. Who's your tourism?
No, no, we all are.
Oh, you all are, okay. Okay, all right, well, we're on the same family then.
Okay, all right.
All right. Thank you very, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
I have more.
Yeah, I've got, I've got mine. I've got mine, yes, I've got, I just sent them right here. Okay. All right, so we're good with that for now. Thank you. Any other business?
Thank you.
The only other thing I would remind folks, Thursday at 10 o'clock, they are going to do the Housing Strategy Zoom discussion. So just, you know, we all sent that invite.
Sure. Reminder tomorrow.
Send a reminder out, okay.
I didn't know how many.
Any other items for the committee?
Got one, Melissa.
Adjourned. Mr. Chairman, we are done. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Ways and Means Supervisor Partee.
I don't know who to bring in from like the other side to kind of counterbalance.
Okay, I call the Ways and Means Committee to order. Issue number one, Board of Supervisors authorizes the purchase of aging network switches.
Support.
Any questions or discussion? I don't know if there's anybody here to talk about this. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Issue number two, Board of Supervisors adopts the equalization rates for 2025 county tax apportioned prior to November 15, 2025.
Support. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Any unfinished business for Ways and Means tonight? Any new business? You all got forwarded the budget reports. Any questions? I do too, actually. Julie, can you come up?
I'm just concerned about these, explained to me that hotel meals and training and the other food stuff, $95,000 to $300 and so.
What was the question on that? He's looking down on this spreadsheet. Hotels, meals, training.
Yep, so we are currently only at 38% of our budget for the year. We're, budget-wise, we, through September, we would be 75% of the way through the year, so we're under budget on that line item. And the food for LEC, the drop-in center OFA, we're at 71% of our budget, whereas in September, we would be typically 75% of the way through the year, so that one's slightly under budget as well.
$395,000, was all this going opposite the aging as part of it, right? Is that your noon, is that your noon meals that they put at?
I think you're looking at, I think you're looking at the other line. I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about.
One, two, three, go up in the bottom.
Yep.
So that's food that's combined for the jail and Office for the Aging. So our budget for 2025 is $532,000. We're at, currently at $379,000 at the end of September, so we're at 71% of the budget. So at this point in time, if you look at it as a 12-month calendar, we would be 75% of the way through the year from a budget perspective. So being at 71% of the cost, we're under budget on that right now.
Yeah, okay. I just remember where all of that was going, is what I was referring to. The next one up.
Were you talking about the hotel motel?
$95,000, you had budgeted $251,000.
Yep, that's county-wide total cost.
That's going to be conferences and other training classes that are approved, I'm assuming.
You had it budgeted $251,000, correct?
Right, so we're under budget by quite a bit.
You've cut that down for another year.
Potentially.
Okay. Where all that was going, I mean, that's, that's a lot of food.
Right now, we're 4% under.
Right.
It's not a big amount.
Answer my question. Thank you.
No problem. So my questions have to do with, in this report, for the items that are over budget at this point. I'm assuming we're going to have to do budget. to do budget transfers, and is that coming from contingency or has that been undecided yet? Because there are some salary lines that are over budget at the moment.
There, there is one, though, that we're looking at with the water sewer, it's got to come from another line. Is that the one?
There's a couple of them. That's okay. So this one?
Yes, that one will need a budget adjustment. So as part of the budget in 2025, the sheriff for the COB security, we budgeted the extra $10,000 in the Board of Supervisors budget, so we'll need a budget transfer to help cover those additional expenses.
Okay. So these items that have been flagged and that are over budget, here's another department for salaries that are over budget, I'm assuming we're going to?
Yes, that'll come through as a budget amendment.
Okay. I see we're good on contingency so far this year.
Do you know when those transfers, are you waiting, are you going to wait till the end of, as close to the end of the year as we can?
Where we're at, yep.
Thank you. Any other questions for Julie? Okay, thank you, Julie. Any other new business? We adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Next up is Human Resource from Government Operations Supervisor Borst.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll call Human Resources and Government Operations Committee to order. Issue number one, following positions were reviewed and approved by the Vacancy Committee on October 14th, 2025. Finance Principal Account Clerk, refill budget of vacancy, and Workforce, Employment and Training Counselor, refill budget of vacancy. These will be committee approval only. Do I get a motion in a second?
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Issue two, Supervisors approve the creation and filling of one full-time paralegal at the district attorney's office.
Support.
Lots of support, all right. John?
Well, this is, as I've already said to several of you, this position, I believe, is going to be incredibly helpful to meet the current demands, particularly with our discovery demands. Right now, we've been operating at a subpar staff for the last two years, and thank you all again. We're beginning to meet that. We're bringing on two new attorneys, one that started last week. This is going to be a, kind of a hybrid support between an actual administrative staff, secretary-type, that can do document work and so forth, and also going to be able to do, help the attorneys creating documents, working through the discovery process, gathering that, disseminating that, and helping the attorneys in that respect. So it's, it's kind of a nice in-between from having to hire a new attorney, which we still have an open slot for, which we have been able to fill. I see this is going to be a really positive in-between position.
Because why haven't you been able to fill the attorney?
It's.
Not competitive?
Well, no, no. That slot is a starting level slot, so we did pick up one person at that level last year. She just got her license in January. It's just a matter of a small pool of people. Unfortunately, well, to be brutally honest, there's not as many people that want to work in public service anymore. When I came out of law school 28 years ago, the list of going to a DA's office was, you know, five, six deep for every position, and now it's just, it's hard to do that. And unfortunately, getting people to move from other areas to come do that, the board was very helpful last year regrading those positions, so we are salary-wise competitive. So I'm going to keep that posted, and hopefully we will get someone at some, at some point.
Thank you.
Do you like that discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Issue number three, Acceptance of 2025 Election Grant Program for Seneca County Board of Elections.
Support.
All right, discussion on this?
Do we have a Board of Elections person here?
I don't think I see her.
The reason I ask is because I know we had this conversation, I think when we were first elected, Elections Board had brought forward that we recommend that the towns take on an increasing cost of elections. And through my town budget, I was kind of wondering where that was.
Okay, so that has nothing to do with this resolution?
I know, but, but I, I. You know what?
How about, how about unfinished, or new business?
I totally agree, but I just thought there might be a Board of Elections person here who then could answer that question. Supervisor Partee.
I can actually answer some of that question, but can we bring it up under like?
Sure.
Under appropriate slot.
Vote.
Can I ask if there's any other questions?
I'm sorry.
Except for Supervisor Truss.
Exactly.
Any other questions?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Issue number four, Acceptance of 2025 Vote-by-Mail Grant Program for Seneca County Board of Elections.
So move. Second.
Sorry.
Aye.
Aye.
Issue number five, Resolution Amending the Seneca County Freedom of Information Law Requests. Second?
Second.
Discussion on this?
This is just bringing us into compliance, correct?
Yeah.
I think the last update was 2013 or something.
Well, about time.
Little update.
All right. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Issue number six, Supervisors approve purchase of one 2025 Ford Explorer for Code Enforcement Office. Got motion to support? Number six.
Number six. It's an add-on, it was on your desk.
It's an add-on, it might not be in your packet totally like that.
Okay, because mine says senior addictions corrections.
Yeah. Because it's yours. All right. We get a motion in a second on that?
Somebody, yeah.
All right, second. All right, discussion on that?
Can I address the?
Sure.
Go ahead.
Committee on this, please. So kind of unfortunate circumstances. We had a vehicle totaled during work hours, hit it during middle of the day. Most times, the county's surplus's stuff, whether it be wrecked vehicles, equipment, whatever, good equipment, and that money goes to a general fund. In our situation, we chose to take the insurance funds to the county, thinking our options are better money-wise than hoping that somebody gives at least a dollar for a totaled car at auction or surplus auction. So with the monies appropriated by the insurance company for this totaled vehicle and other monies in our current budget and moving them around, we can afford a exact same vehicle we just got three months ago for $10,000 less, and that's why I, I asked if we could push this through as soon as possible, because they have two left at this time.
Yeah.
So talking to Julie in the Finance Department stating that it goes to the general fund on surplus, we weren't sure on the insurance check buyout, so we're asking, or I'm asking for our department at this time, that we make sure that those, those monies are appropriated to this purchase rather than the general fund.
Hey, Lee, Lee, so we did write that letter for Van Bordel, but I wanted to double-check. The quote said afford Escape, and the resolution says Explore. So I just wanted to make sure, are we buying an Explore or an Escape?
I believe it was the same exact vehicle that we got.
Okay, because the, the quote that we got from Van Bordel said Escape, so I just want to clarify. We can, we can always update it at the board, but, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, there's a big difference.
Yes.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carries?
Thank you.
All right. Issue number seven, Supervisors authorize abolishing a senior addictions counselor position and creating a filling in a, thank you. You have a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? All right, unfinished business. Do you have anything, Jeff?
I have new business.
New business? Anything, Beth?
What could it be?
So, Mr. Chairman, I'm curious, does anyone know with the Board of Elections, do you have any things that could count apportionments versus accounting?
I've heard Supervisor Partee may have some information.
At the end of the day, it's up to the Board of Supervisors. I mean, that's what it, it comes down to. So I had a conversation with one of our election commissioners and was presented with all the information that she gave us way back when. We haven't taken any action on doing anything.
So for '26, it's whatever.
I think it's pretty much going to stay the same. I mean, I, I budgeted a little bit of an increase in my budget, just in case, but without a resolution coming before the board, it's really up to us.
Because it is, it's a, if you, if you go to its conclusion, it's a significant switching of.
It is, to the town level. I mean, do I, do I think it makes sense? Do I think it's fair? Yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't.
To, to proceed?
As a town supervisor, I just need time to plan.
Right, right.
I thought this big debacle of changing the election cycle on all even years was supposed to save all, everybody money.
Well, I think you're wrong.